Andy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers.
Here at last, in Cadillac.
Ellen Bass.
Ingalls.
Here in Cadillac.
King.
Here attending in Cadillac.
Mayor Falcons.
Here in the city of Cadillac. At this time, if we could get an approval of tonight's agenda. And there is an amendment this evening. Be sure to include that.
This is Councilmember King. I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as amended to add a water utilities easement agreement. As item Roman numeral seven hyphen F.
This is Councilmember Ingalls. I'll support.
Councilmember Ellen Bass, Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries. This time we'll open the floor for our first public comment. We do ask if you would like to speak this evening, if you would tell us your name and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Thank you.
And if you're joining by computer, you can use the raise hand function. And if you're joining by call in, you can press star nine to be recognized. I'm not seeing any raised hands.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. This evening, we do have the minutes from our regularly scheduled meeting on April 19th.
This is Councilmember King. I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Councilmember Shippers, support.
Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Bass. Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, so this evening, we have a public hearing. Marcus, would you like to introduce that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. This evening's public hearing is with respect to a request to adopt an ordinance declaring a local state of emergency due to the COVID-19 pandemic. At your last city council meeting, the city attorney and I provided more of an in-depth explanation, but in short, this would allow the city council to remain compliant with the Open Meetings Act as it's currently in place by extending the declaration of emergency through the end of the calendar year. By no means does this mean that the city council needs to continue to meet virtually throughout that entire period of time. Should, of course, there be a loosening of the restrictions with respect to social distancing and specifically in-person meetings, we can certainly revisit without having to take any action and start meeting in person again. Mike, I'm not sure if there's anything you wanted to add, otherwise Mayor and council will be opportunity for the public to address here.
The only thing that I would add is this local state of emergency runs concurrent with amendments that were made to the Open Meetings Act. So as the city manager stated, you're not required to continue holding virtual meetings, but it does give not only the public body, the city council flexibility to continue holding virtual meeting, but also any of city council members who may not be available can attend virtually. Right now, under the Open Meetings Act, there are only three reasons that members may attend virtually. One of which is a local state of emergency. The other is if a member has a medical condition that prevents them from attending in person. And the third is if they are a member of the military and deployed. So it does provide, at least through the end of the year, some flexibility in the ability for members to attend virtually.
Okay, thank you, Mike. This time we'll open the floor for any public comment as it relates to this public hearing.
I am not seeing any raised hands.
Okay, well, close public comment then and move to discussion by the council or a motion.
If there's no discussion, this is Councilmember King. I'd make the motion to approve the resolution to adopt the ordinance declaring local state of emergency due to COVID-19 pandemic.
This is Ingalls. I'll support.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Bass. Ingalls.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, that takes us to communications for this evening. We do have something from the Cadillac area visitors bureau.
Yes, they're requesting approval to place an oversized Michigan-shaped Adirondack chair with accompanying signage in the city park at the location noted in the council packet.
I think this is a great idea. I looked at the picture. I think it would also be kind of neat if somehow you could identify where Cadillac is on that Michigan shape and put something on the chair to mark where they're sitting.
Great idea.
I think it'll be a fun addition to the city park.
Yeah, that'll be really nice. I'm glad that it's in a location with the security camera pointed at it as well.
Yes. Yeah, so Kathy, is there anything that you would like to say to the council?
No, I just appreciate the consideration and to echo what you've already said. I mean, it's just something fun that we're looking at doing to add to the visitor experience as well as the locals. You know, really, who doesn't love the oversized chair pretty much anywhere you go? And we'd also talked about that of where Cadillac is on there, making, you know, some either a star or a heart or some sort of identifier. And then with the accompanying signage, using hashtags, you know, Cadillac, Michigan, or those kinds of things to generate more user-generated content for us to use and for people to engage while they're at the park. So, you know, taking a photo and putting it on social media and using those hashtags and things like that so that we're collecting them, the city can use some of them, those kinds of things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Councilmember King. I would absolutely make the motion to approve the proposal from the Cadillac area visitors bureau to place an oversized Michigan-shaped Adirondack chair with accompanying signage in the city park at the location noted.
Councilmember Shippers, support.
Councilmember Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Bass. Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. This evening, we have a couple of appointments.
This is being recommended. It's being recommended to approve the reappointment of Dave Gregg to the Planning Commission for a three-year term to expire on May 1st, 2024.
Since Councilmember Shippers, I will make that motion to reappoint Dave Gregg to the Planning Commission for a three-year term expiring May 1st, 2024. And note that he has been serving on that commission since 2006. Thank you for your service.
This is Ingalls. I'll support.
Councilmember Ellen Bass. Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries.
Also being recommended to approve the appointment of Brenda Benson to the Board of Review for a two-year term to expire on May 3rd, 2023.
Yeah, I looked over Brenda's application. That's nice to have somebody who's interested in being on the Board of Review.
I would echo that. And she even was able to state that being on a board such as this in Cadillac is going to help her in her job, helping other people in the community. And so I think that's fantastic that she's willing to do this.
I will make a motion to approve the appointment of Brenda Benson to the Board of Review for a two-year term to expire on May 3rd, 2023.
Shippers, support.
Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Bass. Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries. And that takes us to the city manager's report for this evening.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. The first item is with respect to our centerline marking project. We received one bid from PK Contracting out of Lake City, Michigan in an amount of $11,925.48. Our current fiscal year '21 budget has approximately $14,000 remaining for this project. And based on unit cost provided in the bid, we believe we'll also be able to get some additional painting done as well. The total project is expected to include approximately 12 miles of yellow four-inch skip lines, seven miles of double-yellow passing zone lines, and 23 miles of four-inch solid white edge lines. Lines will be painted on major streets throughout the city. Additionally, city crews will be painting the bike lane, crosswalks, and turn arrow stencils during the project. Again, the recommendation this evening is to award it to PK Contracting accordingly.
This is Councilmember Shippers. I'll make a motion to award the fiscal year 2021 Centerline Marking Project to PK Contracting Inc. in accordance with their bid.
This is Councilmember Ingalls. I'll support.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Bass. Ingalls.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. The next item is with respect to the Everett Street Improvement Project. Bids were recently received on April 20th, 2021. And the recommendation this evening is to award the bid to CJ's Excavating of Cadillac in the amount of $763,306.33. The request this evening does include standard contingency amount of 10%. That would bring the total award to $839,636.96. Our engineering estimate for this project was $910,000. And funds are available in our local street fund and water sewer fund accordingly. With respect to timing of the project, as soon as this one is awarded, the contractor is ready to start, thinking perhaps May 10th could be the start date. And we'll certainly send letters out to the adjacent property owners about the project commencing. We expect it to be about a four-month project in total.
This is Councilmember Shippers. I would like to make a motion to award the Everett Street Improvement Project to CJ's Excavating Inc. for the bid amount of $763,306.33 and to approve a 10% contingency for city engineer-approved field changes in unit quantity or scope due to unknowns in underground municipal construction, bringing the total amount award to $839,636.96.
This is King. I'll go ahead and support.
Councilmember Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Bass. Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. The next street award project under consideration this evening is for Stimson Street. Again, bids were opened on April 20th, 2021. Accordingly, the low bidder is also again CJ's Excavating Inc. out of Cadillac, Michigan. And the recommendation this evening is to award it to CJ's in an amount of $265,561.15. Again, adding a 10% contingency to $292,117.27. Our engineering estimate was $280,000 on the project as well, just as an FYI.
I will make the motion. This is Councilmember Ingalls. Sorry.
No, go ahead.
Do you have a question or are you just waiting to?
No, no, I was just gonna make the motion, but I like your voice better.
Sorry, I'll make the project CJ's Excavating for the bid amount of $265,561.15 and to approve a 10% contingency for city engineer-approved field changes in unit quantity or scope due to unknowns in underground municipal construction, bringing the total amount to $292,117.27.
And I'll go ahead and second. This is King.
Councilmember Ellen Bass. Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. The next item is with respect to a request for the acquisition of ferrochloride. Back in November of 2017, when we competitively bid it out, we awarded it to Webb Chemical Service Corporation. And as a part of that award, it includes the opportunity for there to be a contract extension for up to two years upon mutual agreement of pricing. And that's what we're here this evening to request. The company has offered to extend the contract through February 28th of 2022 at the price of .276 per dry pound. That is up from .245 per dry pound at the time of the bid, but it's still actually below the second lowest bid from 2017. Currently, we spend about $40,000 a year on ferrochloride. And the recommendation this evening is to move ahead with the extension of the agreement at the price just referenced. The original documentation regarding the purchase acquisition is in the public packet, and this chemical is used for part of the treatment process within our wastewater treatment facility.
This is King. I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the extension of the contract with Webb Chemical Service Corporation through February 28th, 2022 for the purchase of ferrochloride at the price of .245 cents per dry pound.
Councilmember Ingalls, I'll support.
Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Bass. Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. This next item has to deal with the land swap with respect to the city and consumers deal that's in place in the Potfett Industrial Park. If members of council may recall, the parcel immediately adjacent to Spencer Plastics is a current parcel owned by Consumers Energy. The city council, Planning Commission, and the Cadillac Industrial Fund all conferred that it would make wonderful sense to actually swap with Consumers Energy a parcel essentially next door to that parcel so that Spencer Plastics can expand their property accordingly. They have plans to add some additional equipment and storage areas and desperately need that property to make it all work. All of the ink has dried and the paperwork is in place. However, there are a handful of costs such as environmental assessment, appraisals, and closing costs that Consumers has a portion for the city to be responsible to cover. That equals a total of $9,185. There are dollars available within the city's industrial fund that can cover those expenses. And the recommendation this evening is to approve the request. And that will also ensure that we can keep this project moving forward.
This is Councilmember King. I'll go ahead and make the motion to authorize payment to Consumers Energy in the amount of $9,185.
This is Ingalls. I'll support.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Bass. Ingalls.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. Under the COVID-19 update report, just received the latest update from the District 10 Health Department. Today in Wexford County, there's been 21 new reported cases, one new death, a total number of 2,422 cases. There are approximately 300 probables, 34 total deaths. 1,873 folks have recovered, and there are currently over 500 active cases. The numbers seem to still be somewhat flat here in our sort of neck of the woods. But we'd encourage everyone to visit their website, dhd10.org for all of the details and more about getting vaccinated and information about the pandemic.
Thank you, Marcus. The agenda had been amended to talk about the water utility easement agreement.
Yes, my fault. I apologize. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And now we've also covered the COVID update. Yes, the agenda was amended to cover the easement agreement for White Pine Village. As members of council may know or may recall, we actually have a public hearing set for May 17th that will convey a portion of property adjacent to the White Pine Village development. That's also adjacent to our new 44 Road Well Field to the White Pine Village development. That ordinance also included language authorizing the proper easement agreement that we needed to keep in place. For better, our contractor is actually ahead of schedule on the project and is nearing a point in time within the next week or so where we would need to have the easement in place in order for them to legitimately continue moving the project forward. And therefore, this evening, we have that easement document for council to consider.
This is King. I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the water utilities easement agreement between the White Pine Village LLC and the city of Cadillac.
Shippers, support.
Councilmember Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Bass. Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, that's the end of the manager's report this evening. And now we have introduction of ordinances.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. The next three items are all introduction items of ordinances that we're looking to set the public hearing forth. All related to our fiscal year '22 budget. The first one is actually for the General Appropriations Act for fiscal year '22. Then the next two are with respect to the water rates and sewer rates. City council, over your last two meetings, had received detailed presentations on these items. There are no presentations scheduled for this evening. There will be sort of a higher level recap as a part of the hearings themselves later this month in May. And so although you need to take them all as separate actions, the request this evening is simply to set the public hearing for each one of the next three items for your May 17 meeting.
Thank you, Marcus. I think that Councilmember King was really looking forward to those presentations tonight, though.
I can go back and we can.
Don't, I don't want to have you put yourself up. And make the motion to adopt the resolution to introduce the ordinance establishing General Appropriations Act for fiscal year 2022 and set a public hearing for May 17, 2021.
This is Ingalls. I'll support.
Councilmember Ellen Bass. Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt the resolution to introduce ordinance to amend section 42-201 and 42-202, parentheses, 3 of chapter 42 of the Cadillac City Code to, oh, wait, is that where we are? Yeah. To adjust water rates in the city of Cadillac and to set a public hearing for May 17.
This is King. I'll support.
Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Bass. Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries.
I'll go ahead. This is King. I'll go ahead and make the motion to adopt the resolution to introduce ordinance to amend section 42-374 of chapter 42 of the Cadillac City Code to adjust sewer rates in the city of Cadillac and set a public hearing for May 17, 2021.
This is Ingalls. I'll support.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Bass. Ingalls.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries.
Just really quick, I know we talked about it last time, but I do want to make sure, Owen, that the 10-year projections are included when we do the public hearing.
Yep, got it, Robert. Thank you.
Okay, so this evening, we have a resolution that needs to be adopted.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I'm just scrolling over to it. Give me one minute. Okay. Yeah, thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. This evening, we do have a resolution that needs to be adopted. I'm very pleased to announce that we're going to have a new tenant in our downtown. Long Road Distillers is in the process of moving into the building formerly known as Better Bodies. It's located at 412 South Mitchell Street. It's what I like to call a private-public partnership that the city was involved with in terms of getting that site ready. The developer, Rob Munger, the city of Cadillac, the state of Michigan Economic Development Corporation, the city brownfield authority, the DVA, everyone, I believe the DVA was involved. But I know the brownfield authority was, but we all partnered together to make sure that that property could eventually develop into something other than remain as blight after the building was condemned after the health club closed. And so we're here this evening to transfer at the local level, and then it goes to the state level, but to transfer the liquor license essentially to make it all work so that Long Road Distillers can occupy. And so the resolution in the package is a one-pager. And it's from the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. And there are representatives from Long Road Distillers on the line as well, I believe.
This is Councilmember King. I'd be happy to make the motion to adopt the resolution regarding local government approval for off-premises tasting room license for Long Road Distillers LLC.
This is Ingalls. I'll support. Oh, sorry.
It's good.
Councilmember Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Bass. Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yeah.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries. Welcome to Cadillac, by the way.
Thank you very much. We look forward to it.
We do, too.
Thanks.
Okay. In our packet this evening, we do have the minutes and reports from the following. The Historic District Commission, Downtown Development Authority, and the Planning Commission. At this time, we'll open the floor for our last public comment this evening.
I am not seeing any hands.
Since Mike is not seeing any hands, I'll go ahead and close the public comment and move to the good of the order if anyone has anything this evening.
Mayor, I just wanted to mention for council and public alike, the timing on a couple of the road projects. The Stimson Street project, we anticipate it's going to start late in the summer, probably towards the end of August, middle of August, the end of August, in the last about six weeks. Also, the Chestnut Street project, which although wasn't on your agenda tonight, that one, we anticipate to be starting probably mid to late June and run likely till end of August, early September, pending you know, pending weather and other issues that could come about.
Okay, thank you for that update.
Thank you.
If there are no other comment?
I've got, I did, we mentioned about the park cleanup. I've got, did we mention about the park cleanup? Isn't that next week?
That is, this Saturday.
Saturday morning, nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock, help clean up the park, and there won't be a picnic afterwards because of COVID, but come with your groups and watch the parks get all cleaned up.
Yes, we will have, I think, water and coffee and donuts available that will be going around to the different groups and making sure that everyone gets some refreshment if they would like it. Thank you, T.I.
You bet.
And if there's nothing else, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Do we have a hazardous waste disposal date coming up, starting this spring?
Oh. When is that?
On May 8th.
May, okay, that is also coming up on this Saturday, yes, for hazardous. Yeah.
So same day?
Be a good day to clean up a lot of things.
Yeah. Okay, wow. Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting this evening. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for helping.